We have the Economic Development Authority over here. Doesn't have to take an hour, to be quite honest with you, but we may have some questions. So, again, thank you for being here. Mr. Layton has got his cane with him?
Yeah.
Is that, okay. You have to talk about-
I'd like to say it was St. Patrick's Day, but it wasn't.
All right. The chairman, Mr. Miller, is going to have some opening commentary.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council folks, for allowing us to be here today. Obviously, we're an important part of the fabric of the city. We represent, if you will, almost 10% of the residents in terms of being people that we touch on a daily basis. Our budget is about $100 million and shrinking. We have about 300 employees that are very dedicated, who we'll hear about, like city employees who've not been able to give raises to in a number of years, but we still continue to do good work on your behalf in the city. We have a brief presentation that tells you the good news and the bad news, and basically the bad news is all about money. The good news, we're doing a lot of good stuff. We've had a lot of good results. No critical issues, that I'm aware of, as your chairman. Mr. Montgomery, we're blessed to have him and the other 300 staff members, and he has a very long history in the city, as you know. So, we have a presentation that's about 50 slides. We'll sort of run through them. We'll be happy to stop and take questions along the way, or you can hold until the end, whatever way you want to do it, it's your call. But that's basically what you're going to hear from us today. I will say that Mr. Robinson should be here. He's expected to be here. Vice Chairman Ham Lee, who's an integral and important part of our board, unfortunately could not get away from work today. She is as stressed as any employee in the city, working for WHRO, and you know what's going on over there in terms of the same issues with budgets and so forth and so on. So, she just couldn't get away. She had something she had to do. So, she sends her regrets and her apologies and thanks you for your support. Mr. Montgomery.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and members of council and members of the board, I'm pleased to be here. If you'll recall, August 16th, we appeared before council for another brief presentation and discussion. So, we're really glad to be back here once again. What I'd like to do is to share with you, our commissioners, from an administrative standpoint, they work very well with us. We appreciate all the efforts of those that are here today and those that join us on a monthly basis for our meetings. In August, we shared with you our vision and mission. That has not changed, and our strategic direction for quality housing, mixed-income communities, using a very strategic business approach, and of course, engaging the community is an important part of our future. In 2011, we'd just like to share with you a few things that the Housing Authority has done, that the chairman mentioned a few minutes ago. We've just completed the third phase and the final phase of a study on the part of William &amp; Mary in regards to the Housing Authority, and talking about what we do on a daily basis and what it means to the economics of this city. We hope to share that with the board at our April meeting, and we'll be forwarding that information to the City Council following the April meeting, once the review is complete. Also, we've developed a number of 40-unit senior apartments in Village Gardens near Old Dominion. As you know, NRHA received one of 17 national awards on neighborhood initiatives planning. We also developed 28 new homes this past year, and we also are underway with Moten and Demolition, and hopefully, looking forward to new home construction there. Grandy Village Learning Center, it's been up and running now for over a year. We received our Gold Lead Certified Rating, which is a great accomplishment. Also, that center received its first-ever national award from the National Housing Association this year. EarthCraft Townhomes on 26th Street were probably one of the only builders of EarthCraft homes at such a volume in the city. We're pleased with that because of its environmental contributions. Maple Woods in Old Huntersville, there's 27 of those new homes under construction, and we see those on a daily basis. Our Builders Guild, very similar to East Beach Builders Guild, requires quality builders with good designs and good materials. Those are the only builders we use on NRHA property. Also, our residential program, we've had a number of initiatives with homeowner loans to get people on homes. That totaled $2.8 million last year. We also secured almost $2 million in other competitive federal grants this past year, and we have helped finance 30 first-time homebuyers in Norfolk. There's a number of things that you've probably heard about, the 12,000 historical photographs, it's online. We've really tried to improve our electronic media, and our website is improving every day. We've received over nine national awards this year of merit, and we've listed a number of those, including the website, some of our publications. HRV has invested over $59 million, both in Virginia and across the country, in new-market tax credits this past year. NRHA has served as a technical advisor for Old Dominion and Hampton Universities with the U.S. Department of Energy Solar Decathlon that was held in Washington, D.C. So, looking ahead, NRHA has a number of challenges. Those challenges, we try to fill financial gaps, both with, it's a problem with non-recurring resources, but also trying to identify reoccurring resources that we don't have to worry about funding. There's been no pay increases for three years for NRHA employees, and if I might go back 10 years, the average pay increase for NRHA employees is 0.75% over the last 10 years. As a part of that, the last raise that employees received was a 2.5% in '08. Previous to that, in '06, there was a 2% lump sum that did not go to the base salary, but it was just based on 2% of the salary. So, as the chairman's mentioned, our average salary for the last 10 years is less than 1% over 10 years, and no raises for our employees in the last three, and we're moving into the fourth year of no raises.
Cheryl, what would it cost you to raise 1%?
Across the board, raise for employees generally, I think we've been spending about a half a million dollars for those types, which would put back into effect merit increases and some things like that for high performers. So, we're a merit-based organization.
What percent is that when you say 5%? Is that like per 1% or for everybody to get what?
Well, we go on performance-based, that's from 0 to 5%, and so they have to reach performance levels on their evaluation to be able to get that rate increase. We have not given any cost-of-living raises.
So, our payroll right now is 15 million. So, 1% is a million and a half, I mean, 1% would be 150,000.
150,000. So, 5%.
Could that be an average of 3.5%? 4%? 3.5%? If you had 3%, you're 500,000.
Basically, as vacant positions are eliminated, we kind of spread the work. One of the divisions that we'll take a look at in a minute is the Development Division. In the last 10 years, we've reduced that from 52 positions to 40. I anticipate another reduction in the Development Division this year of a number of positions. We're trying to finalize that for the board in April, but that could be another huge reduction for them. In housing, we do have base salaries paid to employees that are full-time. Housing does receive a lot of grants. There are special project employees, they may work for one or two years and then go off the payroll. We have a base of employees that work off of federal dollars. All the housing is off federal dollars. So, if there's been any increases in personnel, it's usually associated to housing and grant monies that we receive for work to be done for them. One of the other increases for us is providing assisted housing and supportive services. One that you hear a lot about is our voucher program. The federal government has generally issued us more vouchers and less money to manage those vouchers, which is a very dangerous precedent, in my estimation, that if you don't manage your money well, and you don't manage the people well, landowners and property owners and landlords end up with a problem. And we're very pleased with how we manage the voucher program. As we've mentioned to council, for over three years now, HUD has identified us as a high performer in the voucher program, and this is a great tribute to the staff that currently work in the program, but we want to make sure that we maintain the number of people to administratively follow about 2,900 vouchers on a citywide basis. Also, this is probably the first year that we've had to talk about a reduced operating subsidy for public housing. HUD is still rolling numbers out to us. We're estimating those numbers to be less than what we've received in the past. We do feel that the federal programs are being reduced, and for the first time ever, we're looking at some reductions in subsidies paid for public housing, and that's never happened in our 71 history of NRHA, in the 71 years.
Cheryl, is that the point where they, well, they'll acknowledge they owe you 100 bucks, but they give you 80?
Or 90, or some formula that they rent.
They have a formula, but they send you less than even they permit they owe.
And even more challenging than that, they don't tell you to your end of your year.
Maybe six months into the year.
You're doing the work, you may be six months in, before you know what they're going to give you for the six months you've already done. So, it's extremely challenging situation.
The next item on the agenda, the reduced funding on capital funds. Historically, we have 12 communities. We take a look at spending somewhere, say, on an average of $5 million a year in capital upgrades to public housing communities. Those numbers could be reduced this coming year to possibly 3.5 million, which is a pretty substantial cut in the capital needs. At the same time, the federal government is requiring us to meet higher and higher standards for our public housing units, and for that reason, we need capital money to keep these properties up, and that's one of the other areas that we're seeing reduced. And of course, with housing stock in our public housing communities, that's well over 50 years old, and so the maintenance and upkeep on 50-year-old properties is even more difficult. We've talked a little bit about the administrative funding for HCV, it kind of rolled into our other conversation, but the other piece of all kinds of federal funding grants and programs, all those numbers are coming down. NRHA and the city has been very fortunate over the years to be able to apply for and be granted these federal dollars to support a number of programs in the city. All these formulas are very slowly rolling out of Washington. Congress's actions, HUD's recommendations on their budgets, typically, we won't see a lot of those numbers until July, August, or September, even October, as these numbers roll out. So, it's almost a best guess on what some of these numbers might be, and I know the city and NRHA have to do projections based on what we think we will receive, not what we do have to handle these programs. That creates some difficulty in trying to create a budget process that can actually deliver a valuable product in this city, and that's quality housing. One of the things that I think each of us struggle with is, how many dollars does it take to do X and do it well? And we're not even thinking about well. We're trying to think about, how many dollars can we just do a program? And the well is starting to drop off because of these reductions. So, it means that more nonprofits and more individual government agencies are trying to find new partners to put more money together to continue programs. There may be some things to follow the wayside. We want to visit the portfolio as we do, and our portfolio is increasing. We have over, almost 3,500 assisted multifamily units in the city, and almost 3,000 vouchers that we've talked a little bit about, but also almost 1,300 privately managed multifamily units in the city. So, overall, that's a little less than 8,000 households with a population of about 18,000 people, which represents 8% of Norfolk's population, that the Housing Authority directly works with on a daily basis. Some of the demands that we're facing there in assisted housing is that a lot of these services are being reduced, capital funds are being reduced, and again, it's very uncertain future with federal funding. Our current year's budget is 95 million. Almost 75 million, or three-fourths of our budget, is dedicated almost directly to our housing. Only 20 million to development, and the 460 is some administrative costs. Our sources of funds, again, HUD is at about 56%. Earned income is at 31%, and that comes off of rents, reserves, and other earned income that we have from some of the properties. And we look to about 12 million, or 13% to come from city funds, and a lot of those city funds flow through the federal government to us. What we're taking a hard look at is exactly how much our resources are going to decrease this year. This chart depicts about a $10 million reduction in resources for our overall budget. What we do is find a way to make the budget work, and what we're looking at overall, and we'll talk about this a little bit more, we're looking at about a $4 million deficit presently on our projections for the Housing Authority this coming year in 2013. As a part of that-
Cheryl, you mean you have to close, from what, you have to close your budget for next year, the one that's going to be adopted? You're not running it a 4 million dollar hole right now?
That's right.
Our budget year is July 1.
July 1.
July 1, June 30.
So, we're projecting to start July 1 already, and we don't have all the numbers. We're already showing $10 million worth of problems. We think it's a $4 million deficit that we have no revenues for. In the Development Division, which works in redevelopment and conservation, there is continuing demands and expectations in neighborhoods. As everyone's aware, eminent domain powers have curtailed, and there's just no business there at all in acquisition. Housing market is stalled. I think when we produce 30 or 60 houses a year and have some communities that have new construction, we are not in the majority. We have done, I think, a pretty good job of still building some new homes, but there's very little demand for that, because unless a builder has a contract from a buyer, it's difficult to get funding to even build a spec-built house right now. So, spec-build is almost a thing of the past. Diminishing CIP funding and activities. NRHA, for a number of years, has worked jointly with the city in developing CIP programs and funding activities that we've jointly worked on, and as the city struggles with CIP funding, we struggle with CIP funding. As an example, in the grant CBDG this year, it looks like it's a 16% reduction, over a half a million dollars in home funds, about a 55% reduction, and that's 800,000. If you remember back to 1990 with CBDG funding, the Housing Authority at one time received approximately 100% of all those funds, and over the years, there's been more and more demands made of the funds, plus the reductions of an average of 7% a year for the last 10 years have also been occurring, coming down from the federal government.
Cheryl, $4 million figure. Is that, do you anticipate giving raises out of that? I mean, as you build a budget, did you anticipate raises?
No, sir. No.
Okay. So, it's really steeper than that, if you want to add raises?
This chart depicts the need to take a hard look at HUD slash city funding, and again, a lot of this money's passed through, and as you can see, depicted in the red and the blue from city funding, with a mix of federal and local money. Those numbers are creeping slowly down over the last couple of years. And FY '10, it wasn't real bad, but in '11 and '12 and in '13, we see it even dropping more dramatically than what's indicated here. Initiatives that are currently underway, we want to talk a few minutes about East Beach, which we'll talk about some things coming on with East Beach over the next year to two years, and Broad Creek, some hopefully new initiatives that are starting to grow there. St. Paul's Area Plan and the Choice Neighborhood Initiative, that's coming together, and that's an initiative we worked on this coming year. The public housing portfolio needs assessment. We've just completed a study of all 12 communities of capital needs over the next 20 years, and I would say that our needs over the years is outmanning the money that we have available. We'll be presenting a report to the board on that next month at our April board meeting, and the needs for the older housing is really dramatic. It's very costly, and it's one that, as we roll these numbers out, we have to create a plan to make sure that we stretch and do value with each dollar spent in our portfolio of public housing. The William &amp; Mary Economic Impact Analysis, as you know, we've done three phased studies of different communities and different programs, and that whole package will be available also in April. The timing of that is to try to blend in with all of our budget needs and projections for, out-year projections. We're doing very similar activities as a city would be to try to project capital and operating needs for five years versus a year-to-year budget. We're also awaiting HUD approval in August. We talked about an energy performance grant that we're trying to move forward with HUD that we think will save us in the area of 14 to 20 million dollars over the long term with energy conservation measures in our public housing, which should reduce both the cost of capital costs, but also some of the operating costs and costs for rent and energy in public housing. And that will also be coming forward probably later this summer, if HUD approves that contract. Last year, in August, we talked about the sale of the 201 Granby office building. We have had that on the market now for almost two years. We have had no serious considerations given to us to purchase the building. We have completed the design for the new building at Valentine, and basically, that design is sitting on the shelf, because we do need a sale of the 201 building in order to move ahead with the new construction of a new building on Valentine. As a part of that, the annex, we call it next to the building at 205 Granby. We are currently studying the exterior finish on that building. If you'll recall, back in the late '90s, NRHA expended about $3 million on the exterior of 201 to re-point all the brickwork, do new roofwork and facade work and ceiling windows. It looks like that there's some spaulding problems in the alleyway on 205 building, so we're getting ready to analyze that from a structural engineering standpoint, and we'll have some costs associated to that. If you'll recall, two years ago, we expended about $750,000 to put a new roof on the 201 building, because we had so many water leaks and so forth in the building. So, the roof's in good shape at 201, but now we're concerned about the annex, which is only a four-story building. Let's talk about East Beach. The Steering Committee met recently on East Beach. This chart depicts several items, A through G, that are currently in the work program for East Beach Company. Items A and B on the map are sites to develop an additional five cottages on each site, very similar to the cottages that were part of the Homorama, the last Homorama in East Beach. And also, would mention, item C is single-family new-home sites that are platted, and there's already interest on the purchase of a number of those lots. And then, item E and D is actually expanding Phase 6 to the west, two blocks, to make room for the site for Homorama scheduled for October of 2012. Items F and G is what's called Phase 7, and that's the last phase, that there's no comprehensive plan for redeveloping of that. It's be approximately 12 to 13 acres, since we have looked to move a part of the Homorama site into Phase 6. The value on that property is about $1 million an acre at the last estimate, so got to be some new numbers run on that. The Steering Committee and the board will be looking at Phase 7 over the next year to try to work with East Beach Company on the development plan for that.
So, E and D, D and E are Homorama sites, and F is, is that correct?
E and D. E is the Homorama site, and D is moving the boundary to the west for Phase 6, making Phase 6 move to the west. So, that's the two items. There has to be an amendment to move that line to the west of the master plan. So, what that does is allow us really to get almost 60 homes under construction this year as a part of the Homorama, the new site and the cottages. And so, F and G are Phase 7 only. So, pretty much in 2012, everything to the majority should be underway, except for Phase 7, and that's the last phase. Good news. We do have a slight bit of good news. This month, with the sale of one more lot, the debt that NRHA incurred, which is a little less than $8 million, will actually be retired March 31 of 2012. So, that means that all the debt on the property will be paid off, and then the net sales proceeds will then be forwarded to the city. Some of those estimations through 2014 is about $300,000 a year extra on top of the contributions that are mentioned down in the fourth bullet, which in 2005, the property values there have grown considerably. As you can see, an increase from 40.7 to over $300 million currently. And as we complete Phase 6, that number's going to increase, and as Phase 7's increased and developed, that's going to generate even more. So, East Beach is staying right on track with the financial projections to close the debt on the building and continue to move through the phase development.
Cheryl?
Yes, sir.
How much proceeds has the Housing Authority received in total so far from East Beach?
8 million. Our proceeds go to pay the debt on, so about $8 million in around.
Okay. When was the original plan for East Beach to be finalized? When was it supposed to be done? How far behind are we on track from the original estimate, with understanding the economy and everything that's come through?
In 2003, the guess was in probably 2010, we would be there. Those guidelines and timelines were amended in 2010 to, say, 2012. So, we're on track with the timeline, and the only thing left is Phase 7.
Was Phase 7 included in that timeline?
It was not to be done. It was a part of the discussion, but it wasn't to be done in 2012.
And I think it's important to note that Phase 7 is really the convenience retail piece. It's not a big box thing. It's not a big supermarket thing. It's slated to be convenience retail to serve East Beach and the surrounding community, something that would look nice, sort of low, but it's not all planned out, but that's the concept.
Well, you know, everybody ought to take a deep breath here. I mean, having gone through the worst real estate, depression or crisis, since I guess, you know, the '30s or- you know, the 30s or, you know, the fact that we are actually paying off the debt and that these properties are holding their value says a lot about how well the property, Cheryl and you guys, Shep, everybody has managed this, this project, not to mention the developer himself and, and it's a great credit. I mean, there are really nice developments all over the mantle roads, which have been stopped right in the tracks, but this has, this has kept moving. They got houses under construction, you know, there are people out there buying. I mean, it's really, it's really interesting.
Well, and as, as, just to jump in on that, there's been, there'll be three Homaramas there and two coastal living houses of the year there. I mean, it's a, it's been a remarkable success.
Yeah, I mean, the new provost at the medical school purchased out there. I mean, you know.
The Homarama is the first one in history established by the Builders Association as far as the tenant. That may have been doing this Homarama thing a long time. One of the things that's positive with Homarama this year, it'll give the community another opportunity to visit that site and take a lot, hard look at a lot of very nice new construction homes out there. So hopefully that'll be a very positive for us in October and November.
What is the price point for this year's Homarama? What is the price point for this year's?
The price points that I've heard is low end's probably 400,000.
Some of the ones supposed to be at the Bay Area six.
And I think the Homaramas that we've had at East Beach have been right in the market range because they want to sell those units quickly. So I think East Beach has done a good job with the builders to make sure that they sell.
Quality of state high. Cheryl, do you remember what real estate, what we were getting in taxes back in '03 when this thing really?
10% of what you're getting now.
We're getting like $350,000 if we were getting that.
At the same rate, it's 10% because your value was 30,000, 30 million, now it's 300 million.
The other site that we want to talk about is Broad Creek. The area indicated in the darker color is property owned by NRHA, which includes a large retention pond. To the west of that is Moton, which was 138 public housing units that are under demolition. But what we want to talk about is the conversations that hopefully have been occurring and have been occurring between a number of parties to take a look at this as a possible development for a new school for Broad Creek community. And the areas in green are three other school sites that are within the approximate location, hopefully of a new school on the NRHA property. The NRHA site is about 26 acres and the other three school sites are 30 acres. And there is a lot of land use planning that needs to be done, a lot of communication. So we see this coming year of more and more conversation on that.
I would like to say that even though you see the J-Cock site, if you go back, that is not a part of the, the numbers in terms of building a new school and allowing that new school to absorb those numbers from all three schools.
Right.
You know, so I just wanted to let this guy know that.
And we, we just went to the school board and asked them to join us out there at the site now, four months ago, Cheryl.
Yes, sir.
And we basically said, hey, we've got this property, we haven't developed it yet, there's no infrastructure on it, you're talking about doing some stuff at your schools and the community. It's all city property at the end of, it's all owned by the citizens at the end of the day, if you will. And so we said, let's take a look at this and if there's something that makes more sense to you than maybe what you've been thinking, talk to us about it. You know, we're not telling them what to do, where to put their schools, but as we're looking to finish out Broad Creek, obviously it sort of begs the question, if they're going to do something with schools, what might they want to do as it relates to us? It doesn't really impact us as much probably as it impacts them, meaning as a school function, we, we can develop housing on, on lots of different places and on any of those sites or not. But the, the fact that we have 26 acres in one place is something the school board doesn't have. So we just threw that out to them. Dr. Houston brought their team out and, and we're waiting to sort of hear what they think. I've had some conversations with Dr. Houston and they're, they're considering it and seeing what makes sense to them and to the city. So we just took some initiative and said, hey, take a look at this, see if it helps you.
I wasn't talking about this site, I was talking about the 10.8 acre site. We had been looking at that even when they began to reva, to redo Mission College. Before we even talked about taking down Moton, we had looked at the consolidation of the J-Cock site in terms of expanding the boundary so we could get more of a mix and we wouldn't have to concentrate. So that's always been on the table. I was just making the note that it was never intended to take down J-Cocks and absorb all of that in one building. Whether you're doing a K through five or a K through eight, the model still says 75 students, not 200 students per grade, whether it be eight, seven or six. So I just want that, you know, that to be understood. At the table, we talked about J-Cocks, we talked about Lindenwood, we talked about consolidating those with the, what is that up there, on Tower Water Drive?
Middle School.
Tower Water Park.
No, the middle school on Tower Water Park, north towards Lakewood.
Lakewood.
Lakewood, one on. And so that was always the, the driving, the driver of that in terms of the pupil was the school system. But we had always been looking at that site to be able to push the boundaries in terms of that line as it relates to home and that line as it relates to commercial. So in terms of, I mean, industrial action.
Let me just ask a question, just for clarification. I sat in a meeting at one point and where someone suggested maybe J-Cocks could be folded into this new school. Isn't that, is that, that makes it, the population too strong, be too heavy?
Even, even the school district would tell you the same thing.
Okay, all right, okay. Well, I, I couldn't tell by just looking at the boxes, but that's, so, so the notion then is in the orange colored site here, that's where we'd like to build our new school.
Yes.
Well, let me be clear. We're not, you know, we, we didn't think we were going to tell the school board nor the council where their school should be, what the school should look like, how many people should be in it.
I appreciate that.
That's above our pay grade. We just said we've got some land.
And I don't want to get too far afield either, but I mean, I, you know, at the end of the day, this council will be asked to pay for the construction of the school, so.
It's really an issue for y'all, not for us.
Yeah, and, you know, the smaller sites, I mean, it looks to me like you'd want to do that, you'd want to go to a bigger site.
No, it was always determined that that 17.2, 17.12 acre site was the site because it, it gave you the ability to be able to build a brand new school without having to try to build around a school on an existing site.
It also gave you more fields and more grass and all that stuff. I'm all for it.
You would land swap and then be able to build homes on the.
Why can't we bring this, where I'm headed is, can't we bring this to a decision? Can't we get, get to a conclusion?
The school is agreed. I mean, they've talked to, we.
Well, and now, listen, listen to Shep. He said, four months ago, we had a meeting and, but I don't, have you had a meeting?
I talked to Dr. Houston two weeks ago and said, we're waiting, we're waiting.
Okay, I'm just.
Now, staff's been talking, but nobody's come back to the board and said, here's what we'd like to do.
Yeah, we've been talking to them and I, and the Vice Mayor's correct on everything he said. They've talked about the student population to us, we understand that. But we, we're taking a very broad look at the school system and what the land uses are. And as Chairman's mentioned, I believe the school board will be coming back to us very shortly for that meeting.
I guess I want them to. I mean, sometimes we get criticized for not doing enough with school construction. This is a, this is a site where construction can begin. I mean, I, let's, let's get it going.
There's no place in the city right now that you could build a school, that that school would have more impact on an evolving, progressing neighborhood than a new school next to Broad Creek. We really needed for the success of our project to continue to attract new families into Norfolk who've come because they see a great public school and a great neighborhood.
The reason I want to move forward with it is because of everything you said, but we've got schools in Ocean View and in Largemont that are backed up that, I mean, are crumbling. And so, but I understand what you said here, but until we start going, we can't get to these other schools, we got to get moving, is what I'm, what I'm trying to say.
It would be rare for an Ocean View guy to say that that would be my number one priority, but this would be my number one priority.
The reality is simply this, you have a school here now, you have a school here, you have a school. That's land that school sits on. Nothing sits on this land. You're sending the kids to Camp Estella here, this school that is existing, if you're going to build two schools at the same time, we're very fortunate to have the land to do that. So it's not even a, it's.
I'm all for it. I just want to get moving. I mean, we've been, we've had money in our budget to build schools.
We've been waiting on them.
And the, I know, but I want to get, when you say they brought their team out, is I think I have one person who does school construction, right? And so I don't know how we help them, but it's, it's, I mean, we've determined to move forward with this at Camp Estella. I think we all did last time we all met. But that, that doesn't mean that, that Ocean View Elementary or Largemont ought to go on the back burner as far as I'm concerned. I know that's going to cause you heartache with your budget, but there's some things that can't wait. I mean, that's, I mean, there's, and anyway.
We're ready. Mr. Mayor.
They ought to have that conversation so we can get going.
Okay, NRHA is working with Broad Creek Steering Committee and public schools about providing land to construct a new Broad Creek school. Demolition's underway. There's a number of things that are going there in regards to Moton Circle that's positive, it's hopefully going to produce new housing units. And Broad Creek in itself has already produced 500 new residential units to date. So the opportunities in Broad Creek are all together and marrying each one of these planning components to create a great neighborhood is all in place. All we have to do is do it. St. Paul's area plan and Choice Neighborhood, there's a number of initiatives going on currently between the Housing Authority, the community and the city. And again, this initiative is moving ahead in the current year. I wanted to share just for a few minutes.
Before you go to that, Cheryl, let me, let me say something really quick and, because I've said this a lot in the community, we're concerned with the folks that we have over there that are residents. And we tell them, I tell them every chance I get that, listen, folks, we're doing some planning, but there is no real money to radically redevelop the St. Paul's quadrant. There's no money identified. And we want to make sure for people that live there that they understand that so that they're either not anxious or too excited, one or the other, about us displacing them. And I think it's very important that the city, unless y'all have some money that we're not aware of, that you be consistent in that same conversation with those folks. Because we don't want them to think we're going to come down, come tear their building, their, their houses down next year or the year after that and could build some fantastic place like we've done either at East Beach or whether we've done it at Broad Creek. We don't want them to think that unless that's reality. And, and I think it's important that the city say the same thing that we say, and we're saying that every time we have a chance to say it. Not that we shouldn't be doing some planning, not that we shouldn't be doing some of that, but that there is no funding source identified. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I wanted to share just a little bit about the repositioning efforts that were currently underway. Since June, we've been taking a look at the Housing Authority as far as its organizational structure. All of its positions have been evaluated and all of its programs are currently coming into focus about what kind of a staff component will NRHA need to continue to deliver services that are efficient and effective. And we, we continue to work with the city administration on our roles and responsibilities and shared goals. We're not trying to do anything outside of what needs to be done in this city and we're, I think, working very well on that. Our present structure with four divisions will look something like this, starting July 1. It'll actually shrink to administrative operations, housing operations, development with planning and community building as one of the new structures. We've already started identifying what responsibilities the executive office will have. I'll have HR, information systems, communications and marketing, and of course, the commissioner's agendas and meetings and policy matters. Under administrative operations, we've got three houses, finance, administrative services and budget management. Under housing operations, we've got property management, voucher program, construction management and of course, compliance with all the programs that we deal with. I think we've mentioned in the past, we go through about 40 audits a year through our programs. So there's a heavy demand on housing operations and also our finance folks. The development division has been around for a long time. We have built into it community building, will still have real estate services, planning and project management and neighborhood services and communications. Mr. Manager, we're trying to parallel some of the city's initiatives through our initiatives with your jointment. And so we think the communications will be a lot cleaner and lines between the city and the Housing Authority. We're currently moving through what's called positions under review. Again, we have a little over 300 positions. There will probably be 20 to 30 positions that we'll say are under review, which could be affected in some way. And those discussions are happening over the next several days and be concluded by April 1st. One of the things that we continue to struggle with is how does our structure need to continue to be flexible and work? And again, what is hurting us many times is overhead costs that get piled on top of organizational demands and program demands and where do you charge the money? That's the bottom line then. If any of you are in private business, overhead is the thing that you have to manage very closely and we're finding in our organization, it's in the same boat. So what's going to happen? Between July of 11th through January 12th, we went through all of our structures. We've looked at all the positions for the last couple of months. In April and June, we're going to have the final structure and position changes. Everything with the staff will be completed and we'll have a new organizational structure and programs to be in place based upon three elements of our drive. First element is of course the budget. Second element is programs and services. Third element is people that have to deliver the second pieces with the money. So we're, I guess, over time, we've been able to form what I call a matrix budget that mixes and matches and weaves a number of funding sources with people and programs. Well, I think we've mixed and matched and weaved about all we can do. We are out of yarn and we have to find a more simplistic way to manage our budget. And I think that's being worked on as a part of this restructuring. And we did have an early retirement incentive. Last year, we had approximately 42 employees that were eligible to retire. We had 16 people to take the early retirement incentive pay, which was approximately $10,000 each. We feel that a lot of our employees are staying on just because of the job market and because of the economy and because of healthcare. And at the current time, we do not have any proposals on the table for any other incentives for early retirement in this current budget because even those programs cost money. Okay, our budget process goals.
Cheryl, how many employees do you have that make over 100,000?
Two.
Excellent.
You know what kind of one of them?
Well, I knew that. I didn't know. They always ask that in the school system because they think that there's all these people who get paid a lot of money and it's not true. So.
Right.
And Marcus's staff is different.
Again, this is kind of a refresher on our budget goals. Right now, there's about a $4 million deficit, but we, we think it's a pretty hard number. We're looking at a reduction as much as 10% of our workforce, which equates to 20. as much as 10% of our workforce, which equates to 20 to 30 full-time positions. We are working and will work with all of our incumbents to try to place them in other positions as vacancies occur. And there will be some that we won't be able to take care of, I'm sure. But we'll be as human as possible in dealing with each one of these employees. This year, NRHA did request city funding of general fund appropriation to move from $550,000 to $1,550,000. So that's an additional $1 million of the deficit that we're hoping that the city will work with us at the minimum in closing. Any more than that would be helpful, but we really feel that a million is, is very much needed.
I was really hoping we'd had a little more time, you know, after we absorbed the presentation, to get to those questions like, what do you need from us in terms of the direction, in terms of, I see you're shrinking the organization somewhat. But I guess my question is, you know, is that with the shrinkage of the organization, what areas will be, I won't say compromised, but what areas will be hurt the most in terms of this reorg? And, you know, what is it that we can do to help you provide continued service at the level that you've been providing? And what can we do to help facilitate, facilitate some of these critical projects that, or initiatives that you guys have that we need to finish?
Well, it's a couple of things. One is that these reductions, our budget is so tight, we have very little flexibility to keep people on the payroll. So that's, that's a huge problem for us. We are shrinking, basically, the biggest impact is on the development division. We are shrinking that division to the point of we're losing expertise that we've had for a number of years. We have employees 20 and 30 years of service. We have eliminated a lot of positions of, of knowledge and wealth for us. That's been a biggie. We're gonna lose more of those people probably this year that has tremendous knowledge. Those people would be valuable to the city if we can move them into the city roles. That would be fine with me. I just want to keep them as a valuable resource to the city. So the flexibility of either working for the Housing Authority or for the city, I think they can make a contribution. It's clearly an indicator that it's not the city's funding problems. It's the pass-through money that the federal government provides the city that's been reduced that now cannot be passed to us. So it's really a federal funding problem and not a city resource funding problem. I think if the city had the federal dollars, they would pass those on to us to do some of those critical jobs that we've been doing for a number of years.
Well, the federal government is basically essentially doing what the state is doing. You know, you're serving a population of people. And they've asked you to create a new formula in terms of creating revenue. And so, you, you either, you either have to choose to raise the rents on, on our public housing or approach it totally different, whether it's income-based, to offset the, the cost that you're, the money that you're losing. Or, you know, you don't have the funding and, and then you continually to have to cut back or scale back. So I, I think that, you know, because these are our citizens, and, and our goal overall as a city, as a city, not just your, it's not your responsibility. So I tend to differ there because it's our responsibility too. So again, any, any time that we can help understanding what the problem is, or how do we look at who provide, you know, best, the best services for, you know, the different avenues that, you know, that we're, we're embarking on. And so...
Mr. Vice Mayor.
Let me help you a little bit.
Please.
Let me jump in for a second. We are confronted on three fronts, okay, in terms of funding. We have federal funding that flows for public housing. We have CDBG-type funding that flows through the city to us. And it's a diminishing stream, and we're getting less share. We're giving a bigger share to other groups over the last 10 years. And the whole amount of money's down. And then the CIP funding, which is straight city funding, has decreased as well. The way that we pay for our development division, basically, is through fee for service. So we'll take a project that you give us, and we'll charge you something to do that. It's typically, in the past, it's been 8%. Sometimes it's 4%. Sometimes it's zero, whether that's the city or whether it's ODU in some cases or whatever. So as you give us less work, one, we have less work to do. Two, we don't have the money to pay the overhead with anymore. And as you've ratcheted down on top, time from time, and taking that number from 8% to 4%, obviously, we have half as much money to pay the overhead. At the same time, which has been very, which is sort of new, and is the scariest piece of this, the federal government is saying on public housing, we know it costs you a buck, we say it costs you a buck, but now instead of giving you 94% or 96%, we're gonna give you 88%.
But they said that, how many years ago? That was about, what, five years?
No, that, that happens every year. And we never know what it's gonna be the next year. We don't know till about 6.1%.
But they did say the outcome, what is it, the...
Let me, let me, let me finish. So we have less work, which means we have less fees. We generally have been taking our admin fee, which now is at 550. We've been ratcheting that down, what, every year, Cheryl? 10% a year?
Yes, it's been a difference.
550. The 550 we've been coming off every year. So now, we don't have any sort of like direct funding just for, for overhead. And one of the reasons we're asking you for this $1 million, at least, is because we can't pay our overhead. I mean, we don't have enough work. So back to your question, some straight-line funding would be important to us, and we've asked for that. But more work. There's still redundancy between what the city does and what NRHA does. And from a citizen's perspective, that doesn't necessarily make a lot of sense. So let's find that redundancy. And the city just needs to clarify what they want us to do and understand what the impact of that is.
That's all.
We could do all the demolition. We could do all the acquisition. We could do none of the acquisition. We could do, you know, but, but what's happening is we're trying to keep two heads alive, two bodies alive, and there's not enough work. So that's, that's the answer to your question.
My point, asset management is one. And if the model continues to go, if you don't do anything about raising rents in terms of public housing, then the monies that you use to put back in the project for maintenance, upkeep, and so there won't be much of that there than you, that, we're gonna have to absorb that sooner or later. That's one piece of it. The other piece of it, again, acquisition and demolition. You know, I serve on several task forces where I work closely with the offer redevelopment Housing Authority. That's something you guys do well. Acquisition, demolition. You got people to do it. They acquire property required across the city, millions of dollars worth of property in terms of taking it down and doing that. We do that on the city side, you know. Just in the communities that we don't use you and the communities that we do use you, it's a big difference. It is a big difference. And so, I truly believe that we need to, at some point, look at what we do well and look at what you guys do well, and, and begin to consolidate and allow folk to do what they do well to be able to move the city forward. We're all for that.
We're in the same neighborhood, doing the same thing in some area. We got Gem Lodge, they got Lodge. That makes any sense. And I, if they've got the expertise, I'm saying move it over there.
Let me, let me say one last thing, because it's important. This isn't something that the city staff and our staff has not been talking about over the last year. And it's been a receptive ear. They're working with us, but we need to get there. You know, from the citizen's standpoint, we need to get there, whatever that is. And that's for our staffs and the council and our board to work out. But obviously, those problems have crept in over a long period of time. But we are having receptive ears from our, from our colleagues on the city side. And we very much appreciate that.
One other quick question, and then we'll run away. What is the value of the real estate owned by the Housing Authority approximately? Not, not, I'm talking about marketable, not your office building.
The marketable real estate's $13 million carried on our books, just in financial...
But I'm not talking about the office building. I'm talking about something that we...
The stuff that we, that which we have prepared for sale, advertised for sale, has a book value of $13 million.
Because I mean, I, I know on the city side, we've got properties, and I don't think we're nearly aggressive enough to market. And I think that everything that you have and we have ought to be put together, put on a website, put up, so that anybody can find out what's there. They may come with a proposal that's not acceptable. You can tell them that.
Ours is on our website.
There's a lot of money laying out there that could go towards your administration.
Ours is on our website.
Could go towards, you know, schools or whatever. I don't think we, I think we need to, we probably ought to do it together.
I, I'm all for that. I would tell you that ours is on a website. And I would tell you that the, the, most of the property that we own are in, are in places that are really hit hard now in terms of selling. You know, the builders can't get the financing.
If it doesn't make sense to sell it, I don't say sell it. But I know we have property on the city rolls. And whether, we need somebody marketing that, whether it all goes to economic development or to, I just think it's economy to scale there. But we have, either way, we gotta get more aggressive.
We're all for that.
You can certainly sell some of what's on the books. Certainly, some of ours could be sold. But you might be building back worse than what you tore down to improve a neighborhood.
I don't think we want to do that. I'm not saying compromise.
Cheryl, you had some reserves, and I know you've been sort of eating into those. Is that a fair statement?
No, we have, over the last 10 years, we've went in and supplemented cities, operated $850,000 a year, each year for the last 10 years.
Is what you've been moving into your reserves? Reserves that, which you've built up over sales of property or of programs where you got paid and you didn't spend, you didn't need to spend as much money and you, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, the good news is you've been able to accumulate these reserves. But just to keep your doors open, you're now dipping into your reserves, right?
Yes.
And we project a runout by...
Yeah, that's the next question.
We project a runout by 2013.
Right. Yeah. Okay.
We're out of a lot of possibility financially.
And we've been, this isn't news. I mean, we've been talking about this.
Let me tell you, this isn't news to any of us either. I mean, I mean, the state is doing, I mean, everything is coming, becoming a local government problem, whether it's the school system, you know, whether it's this sort of, you know, whether it's this. I mean, we are, I mean, we are literally left to pick up the pieces on most everything, you know, that we're gonna part of.
With good administrative funding business models for our development division, which we do not now have, and with some security that we would get added with federal funding for the public housing and Section 8 voucher programs that we run, I believe that program maintenance is doable. We generate some funds from privately-owned housing stock that we have. What our staff is most concerned about is fulfilling our core mission, which is housing the hottest to house part of our population. And that funds that have been available for supporting the development division are going to ultimately have to be diverted to the public housing side of the ledger to keep that afloat. And at some point, city council's gonna need a serious conversation about whether it wants to do what it's never had to do since the day public housing came into existence. And that's use some city funding to keep public housing up to its level. Because if we do not do that, by some means, the impact on all of Norfolk will be hugely negative as we go back to the days of people living five and six in a two-bedroom apartment, five and six families in a two-bedroom apartment. That's what brought Park Place down. It can bring other neighborhoods down.
So that's why we've really got to take a, a real look at asset management. I mean, we, we're gonna have to approach this thing totally different than we approached it 40 years ago, you know, in terms of making tough decisions. We've done that once. I mean, hell, we got a model. We did it in Broad Creek. I mean, we tell people, you gotta go to work. There, there are, there are a population of people in this city we gotta take care of. That's our senior citizens and people with disabilities. But people that are able-bodied that can go to work every day, we're gonna have to challenge these people to go to work and help pay, you know, I'm not talking $600 and $700, but they're gonna have to pay. They're gonna have to offset this formula to be able to keep us to a level of that we don't, that we, our, our, our communities don't diminish. And like you said, five or six people living in, in one unit, or the impact then goes to the private sector, and then it impacts these already high census poverty tracks in the form of a single-family home or taking a voucher and going outside. So all I'm saying is that we really have to take a real look at how we approach this and make some real tough decisions and, and, and work from a model. And people will rise to the level if they understand what it is they have to rise to. There are people waiting now for us to, to, to create housings and motin circle. And these people understand what their expectations are. And the people in the St. Paul quadrant, likewise, they know what the expectations are. So what I'm saying is that if you, if you, if we, we put the infrastructure in place, we can, we can allow people to be successful in what we're offering in this city. Yeah.
Very, I, I would like to say that very few of our able-bodied residents are not working. We did a survey a couple of years ago. I suspect today it's worse because of the economy. But a few years ago, out of our entire public housing structure, we found, I think the number was 313 households that we considered employable that were not employed.
Where it was worse than that 10 years ago.
Right, right. But they, I mean, the welfare reform bill produced a lot of changes. Our programs are producing changes. We devote pretty substantial resources to workforce training and to moving people up. You know, 50% of our households are, are housed persons or children. 25% are elderly or disabled.
I know, I know.
So, so, you know, only maybe 25% of the households are ones that, that you can look at for improving their employment condition, not necessarily getting them employed.
What are we doing in terms of those folks who have gotten job training and things like that? And we have helped to get them employed or increase their employment. What are we doing to help transition them out of public housing? Because my understanding is that it was never meant for you to be a per, a permanent public housing resident. But if you're working and you're earning more money, seems like you can transition into market-rate housing perhaps, and not in, and not stay in public, I mean, because there are people in public housing making like $30,000 a year.
Well, you don't have a threshold that you get put out. Your rent goes up, but you don't, you don't get put out because you're making X number of dollars.
No, I don't. And I don't mean get put out, but at some point, people need to transition out of a public housing model into a market-rate model and, and become even more self-sufficient and even more self-sustaining. And I think that's something that we can improve on in terms of, you know, helping people to be better people.
And, and we do have a number of programs that work to that effort of self-sufficiency, trying to improve their lives, give them opportunity both in job education. And that is a goal of family self-sufficiency, to do exactly that.
I would tell you though, that's the, the most challenging piece and the one we have the least amount of money for. Okay? When you look at our whole budget, that's the, you know, it's, it's, it's one thing to house somebody. It's another thing to help them get the tools and the, and the experience and so forth to, to go to that next level. And we don't, it's the hardest part, and it's the place we have the least amount of money. Okay? So it's a, we're very challenged in that area. Very challenged.
Cheryl, did you have a finish?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, and Board, I think this chairman mentioned, I'd like to close with just one comment, that over the last year, we have made, I think, tremendous progress working with the city. I don't think there's any problems or situations that we cannot sit down and resolve and try to bring some recommendations either to the Board or the Council to resolve some of these issues that we find today budget-wise. I think the Housing Authority plays a key role in this city. It's played a key role in the past, and I still see a key role in the future.
Any more questions, anybody?
Thank you.
Cheryl, thanks. Thank you. You know, Cheryl, just one other, and we got some nice accolades in the, was it the Brookingson Institute? About how many, we went from like 10 census tracts that had over 40% of folks who were living in poverty to eight. We're one of the very few communities in, you know, with inner-city communities, core cities in the country that actually went in that direction. The census revealed that we had so many families, fewer families living in poverty in the city. And there was a lot of good stuff in the census figures that we, that you could take a lot of pride in, some satisfaction in it.
pride in, satisfaction in, that, I mean, things are happening here that aren't happening in other places. And I know your money issues are real, but, I mean, what you were able to do with what you've got, I think you all have done remarkably, and the city too, but, I mean, you guys have been in the forefront of it, so.
And let me just say one last thing. We talk a lot about deconcentration of poverty. The reality is, the city of Norfolk is very deconcentrated. If you look at where we, where our folks live, and if you look at the government reports, we're not nearly as concentrated as many places. If you look where our housing tour vouchers are-
And I know we did some things to do to that.
Exactly. But we're getting there, and we're there.
Okay.
We've got a lot of work, a lot of work.
All right, thank you. Thanks a lot. Thank you. That was a great report. Thanks, y'all.
We're saying, "Mrs. Commissioner," she's not-
I don't know. Got to bring them in here.